Thanks, Brian. All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight at this December 6, 2021, meeting in the Homewood City Council. We don't have any proclamations tonight, so I will go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we're going to start with an invocation from Dr. Jones, followed by the pledge of allegiance. So if everyone will please stand.
If you'll bow your heads with me. Dear Heavenly Father, as we celebrate Advent and prepare for the birth of your Son, Jesus Christ, let us truly be thankful. Thankful for your great love and blessing over our lives. Thank you that your favor has no end and that it lasts our entire lifetime. Thank you for our citizens, all of our employees, and all the people that spend time in Homewood every day. May we remember that this holiday season, many people may be hurting as they're not celebrating the holiday with a loved one. May we also remember the less fortunate and the need to take care of our neighbors during this season of giving. May the Lord bless you and keep you. May the Lord make his faith to shine upon you and be gracious unto you. May the Lord lift up his countenance upon you and give you peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Ms. Salter, will you please call roll?
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtin?
Here.
Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon? Counselor Wolverton?
Here.
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Neils?
Here.
Counselor Andrus?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
I'd like to just have one absent, but you still have a quorum.
Great. Thank you so much. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our regular council meeting of November 22, 2021. I would entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of those minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Neils. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 10 to 0. All right, next we have board vacancies. First, we have the Ward 1 Environmental Commission, which we did get an application from Ryan Day. I believe he's the only applicant, so I would assume there's probably a motion from Ward 1.
Does that say Day when I said that?
It's okay. It's because I know a Ryan Day. Sorry about that. Haven't seen him in like 30 years, but I know. All right, so we have a motion for Ryan Day.
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I was letting that.
Thank you very much. That's 10 to 0. We also had a ward for abatement board that closed today without any applicants, I believe. So do y'all want to reopen that? How long do you want to reopen it?
Let's do it January.
Okay.
We will do some recording.
So let me look. January's going to be a little tricky this year. You want the 10th or the 24th?
Let's say the 10th.
All right, so we will keep that open until January 10 at 4:30. All right, and then, Mr. Mayor, you got an appointment for us?
That is correct. This will be my last appointment to the Beautification Board, because if I adjourned it tonight, it would no longer be my responsibility. But we do have a Ward 1 candidate that was brought to us by the President of the Beautification Board, and I would like to nominate Abby Chadwell.
Fantastic. Congratulations to Ms. Chadwell. All right, and I think that does it for board vacancies. We do have one addition to the agenda tonight. It'll be added to other new business. The item is 091221, Request to Authorize the Mayor to Sign an Agreement with the Homewood Chamber of Commerce, brought to us by Robert Brigette, our Finance Director, and Melody Salter, our CPA. That's just about signing the agreement that we have with them every year for the money that we give them, and that is already included in the budget. So with that amendment, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Gualtin, second for Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 10 to 0. All right, next we have the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harden, second by Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved, 10 to 0 as well, which brings us to other new business. First item, 111121, Public Hearing Set for Tonight for Consideration to Rezone 1832 25th Court South from I-2 Institutional District to NPD Neighborhood Preservation District. Applicant is Trent Beasley, the owner of HBILLC, to permit the renovation of an existing nonconforming single-family house. This comes to us from Planning Commission with a vote of 6 to 0 for a favorable recommendation of the rezone. And we will start with a report from PND, Ms. Andrus.
I was afraid you were going to say that. Ms. Salter, I do not have any minutes in front of me from that meeting.
I just realized it was the meeting before last, so I'm trying to pull them up.
Okay.
I thought money, send it out without recommendation.
I know you sent it out without recommendation.
No, we did.
Hold on just one second. Send out a recommendation pending the public. Was that the meeting before last, do you remember?
It was...
The 15th?
Yes, it was, because that would have been the week after Planning Commission, I believe.
And it was, I just realized it was the meeting before last, so we didn't have it on there. 111121. Yes, after hearing from Kell Smith, Mr. Wolverton, and seconded by Mr. Gualtin, made a recommendation to send out without recommendation pending the public hearing, and it was 4 to 0.
That would have been my guess. I would have gone Gualtin-Wolverton, but apparently it was...
It was Wolverton-Gualtin.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you. All right, so with that, we will open the public hearing. I know I see Mr. Pugh out there. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, Mr. Pugh, would you mind coming up and just...
Actually, yes.
Oh, or Mr. Smith. Sorry, Mr. Pugh, your name was on the item. I apologize. Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you.
Can you give us just an idea of what we're dealing with?
Sure. Brian's got a couple of images for the screen. Here we are in Rosedale, just to the east of the Lee Center. Go to the next one. Yep, so you can see that entire block that the Lee Center was on was zoned I-2 at some point, probably in the 80s, and we feel like 1832 should have never been rezoned from NPD to I-2. It's always been a residence there.
Is that the one right there? Is that the one that's outlined in red, I guess?
Yeah, that's correct. Yep, and there's the house. Thank you, Brian, for pulling that up. It's the house, single-family residence, just next to the Lee Center.
Okay.
And a lady came to the committee meeting, and I thought she was going to be here, but she came and was representing the...
The owner, the project manager is here, so he can speak if anybody has any questions for him.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there anyone else here that wants to speak for or against this item? I see you flinching. You're welcome to come up if you want to.
Give us a name.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Let me interrupt you real quick. Will you just give us your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Trent Beasley. I'm the guy that's over all the projects in this area for this piece of property here. Basically, when we purchased this property, we was understanding it was residential, but once we got into looking into it to try to make a upgrade to the house and all, it's, it was to our knowledge, it came up as IT, and went back and did some research. It's 1986 is when it got changed over. But basically, for us to do any remodulate, the kitchen is low, it won't pass code, so that's kind of where we're at now, trying to get rid of the residential. If anybody's got any questions.
What are y'all planning on doing? Just renovating and upgrading and...
Yeah, completely redo the house, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
For someone or...
It may be one of ours, or it may be a rental, or it may be a sale.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not the law. Close the public hearing and ask if there are any comments or questions from council.
It's not often that we get to go from an I-2 to a NPD, so...
I would make a motion for unanimous consent.
I would second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Smith and a second from Ms. Andrus. Ms. Salter, if you will...
I think you're going to have a reading.
Sorry, thank you. Mr. Kendrick, will you give us a reading?
Yes, I'll be brief. It's an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the City of Homewood, whereas the Planning Commission has favorably recommended the property described in Section 1 should be rezoned from its current zoning I-2 Institutional District to the City of Homewood Neighborhood Preservation District, whereas City Council has determined that December 6 is the time and place for a public hearing. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council that the following described property shall be taken from its current zone I-2 and rezoned to NPD. Section 2, then after the act of this ordinance, that the uses permitted under NPD shall control the uses of the property described in Section 1. Section 3, that December 6 at 6 o'clock PM is the time and place for the public hearing. Section 4, that city clerks give a notice as required by law. Section 5, if any part of provision or ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, all other parts remain not affected thereby. Section 6, ordinance will become effective within stop sign by the City Council, approved by the mayor is otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. I assume the reading didn't change anyone's mind, Ms. Smith or Ms. Andrus?
No.
Okay. All right, Ms. Salter, if you'll do a roll call. Vote, please.
And the record, thank you, Ms. Neils, that Counselor Alamon's here too.
Okay. Counselor Gualtin?
Yes.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Neils?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that is 11 to 0.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Smith, second for Ms. Gier, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Yes, or Counselor Gualtin?
Yes.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Neils?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes.
So that is 2820.
All right, thank you very much. So that will be 11 to 0 for that vote as well, and ordinance 2820. Next item, 251121, Bid Opening Date Set for Today at, earlier today, at 5:30, with bids due at 4:30 for two Harley-Davidson motorcycles for the Police Department, brought to us by Chief Ross and Corporal Self. And I will start with the report from Finance. Mr. Kendrick?
Well, this was carried over on your agenda, but we did have the bid opening today at 5:30. We had two bidders, and you want to go ahead and give us a recommendation? They were reviewing it, so Captain Sutton has that recommendation.
Based on the price and the bid opening, we recommend we're going with Ryder's Harley-Davidson. Their numbers were substantially better than Harley-Davidson and Montgomery of the two bidders.
Okay, and this was a budgeted item, so I'd make the recommendation that we accept Ryder's Harley-Davidson as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Do you have that in front of you, 42?
The numbers?
Yeah, for two.
Based on a single motorcycle, but we're buying two, so you basically double it. Ryder's was $20,959. Harley-Davidson-Montgomery was $23,031.19.
Wow. Any difference?
I'd make the recommendation for that, Ryder's Harley-Davidson at the $20,959 per unit.
Second.
And I would second that.
I think Mr. Gualtin actually beat you to the punch, but...
I can yield. This is a very quiet second.
I'm just, I was really as much making sure that that's who I heard down there.
So it's Jones and Gualtin?
Jones and Gualtin.
Okay.
Quiet second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 21187.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next item, 011121, Bid Opening Set for December 20, 2021, at 4:31 PM for mowing landscaping of state right-of-way areas in Homewood, brought to us by Berkeley Squires. We will carry this item over for that public hearing at our next meeting. Next item, 261121, Public Hearing Set for December 20, 2021, at 6:00 PM for consideration of offense setback variance on a lot with two front yards to reduce the required setback from 15 feet to 0 feet at 3101 Roxbury Road, brought to us by Joey Miller, the homeowner and Wyatt Pugh of our Inspections and Permits Department. We will also carry that item over to our next meeting on the 20th. Next item, 241121, Request to Authorize the Mayor to Sign a Contract with Hickson Consultants in the amount of $16,730 to create the scope of work and bid package for City Hall repairs, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh and Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. And I believe we have a report from Finance. Is Ms. Smith reporting this out? Okay.
Yes. The committee met last week and voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval of the funding from Capital 1211 from carryover fund, I mean, to Capital 1211 from carryover fund balance. The motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
All right, thank you very much. We have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments?
Can I ask what the repairs are? I was not here for Finance.
Yes. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, this is about the membrane?
Yes.
For the parking deck?
I think this is just for the study.
Yeah, this is the study of the membrane to see what needs to be done. Okay, thank you. Sure. All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 21188. Next item, 301121, Request for Consideration in Reduction of Sales at, I think, Sales Price at 307 Oxmore Road Due to Jefferson County Sewer Issues, brought to us by Mayor McCloskey and another report from Finance. Ms. Smith?
Yes, the committee voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval of the reduction of the sales price from $65,000 to $50,000 to allow the purchaser to make some sewer line changes that have to be made. The motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
All right, so we have a motion, another motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's also 11 to 0, and will be 21189. Next item is 180921, Request to Consider the Members of the Beautification Board as Ward Representatives to be Appointed by the Council, brought to us by Nick Sims. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes, the committee met last week and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of a new, of 15-member board with 10 ward-specific members and five at-large members to be appointed by the City Council for four-year terms, with the board being involved in holiday lighting and other decorative and beautification projects. And the motion was made by Ms. Gier and seconded by Counselor Alamon.
I'm surprised we left off that first read on that one.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you for checking. Thanks for reminding me that.
That's why you missed the other one, it was my fault.
Mr. Kendrick, will you give us a first reading?
Yes, it's an order to amend Article 3 entitled Beautification Board, Check 11, entitled Alpha and Centexion of the Code of Orders, real and any other City Council as follows. In Section 1, in Article 3 entitled Beautification Board, Check 11 is amended, the rate is followed. Section 11-50 deals with the creations of the board. Section 11-51 deals with the composition and appointment in terms of both member of the board. Section 11-52 deals with the due to restrictions. Section 11-53 deals with the requirement for meetings. Section 11-54 deals with executive committee. Section 11-55 deals with the officers. Section 2, all provisions of Check 11 of the Code of Orders is accepted, set out here until a random proportion of the pack. Section 33, any collective provisions of the order, again, unconstitutional, or invalid by a court of competence, here is taken, all parts not affected, shall remain a full portion of the pack. Section 4, the orders shall become effective due to constitution by the City Council, approved by the mayor is up, will have become law.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Any questions or comments from anybody? If not, I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Harden, and a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtin?
Yes.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Neils?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that is 11 to 0. Now, I would...
Motion to approve.
Yeah, thank you.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Smith, second for Ms. Andrus, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtin?
Yes.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Neils?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes.
2821.
Great, thank you. 11 to 0, ordinance 2821 has passed. Next item, 211121, Request for Mayor to Sign Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan with FEMA, brought to us by Mayor McCloskey and J.J. Bishop. And we have another report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes, the committee met and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approving this. It allows us to participate in a county-led program, which would give us access to resources if there were a natural or some sort of emergency or disaster situation. The motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Counselor Sims.
All right, thank you very much. So we have a motion from Special Issues. Any questions or comments?
Is this, at one point, we've talked about, and I'm just, my memory's so bad on, you know, when a disaster happens and they send out notice to everybody, is that all part of this?
This would allow for us to use, it would allow us access to federal resources, I think, for one, and then it would allow us, like, for debris removal and that sort of thing, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
That's what that would be for.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Just a clarifying question.
Yeah.
So is this something that we have not had in place previously, or is this something that we're renewing?
2018, the last, the last time we...
And how long is it good for?
I'm not sure. Most likely, it's more than 42.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds like it. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0 as well, and will be Resolution 21190. Next item is 221121, Request for Mayor to Sign Memorandum of Understanding Between the Jefferson County Commission and the City of Homewood Regarding Debris Removal and Monitoring Services Following a Natural Disaster, brought to us by Mayor McCloskey and J.J. Bishop. And another report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes, this is very similar to the previous one. We voted 5 to 0 to recommend approving it. Motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Ms. Gier.
All right, we have another motion from Special Issues. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and will be 21191. All right, 191121, Request Permission to Work in the Right-of-Way at 1608 Ridge Road, brought to us by Jason and Meredith Price, the homeowners, and Wyatt Pugh of our Building Department, and a report from Public Works. Mr. Wolverton?
Yes, sir. As mentioned, we had both the homeowners present last week in committee, and the committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval pending Kell Smith's approval of the plans. Motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Neils.
All right, and Mr. Smith, I assume we have had approval of those plans, is okay?
I think, just to clarify, part of the question was about the initial step, kind of at the landing at the top.
Right. Right, they're not, they haven't submitted any plans yet. Got it. But the only issue was about them making that one square 5 by 5, right?
Correct. It needed to be 88.
So then you understand that this would be, that this approval would only be conditional upon the plans that they submit being, including that, right? That's right. Okay.
The agreement says for consideration of construction of the sidewalk, show to improvement issued by the City of Derry and Clons for the JPA is described, because the new one misses the title.
Okay.
It's toward national, specifically, uh...
All right. All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and will be 21192. All right, which brings us to the committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of that agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Quick question.
Yep.
On the first item, should that be the order of finance?
I first said that to you until the mayor's office, and I was fine, I wasn't pressing it.
That's why, that's why it's going there, is because it'll, it'll affect the pay.
We're taking away another holiday.
No, we're adding an extra holiday.
It would be adding a holiday.
Be 13 instead of 12.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion and a second for approval of the committee referral agenda.
Move to second.
Who is the first? Thank you. So Ms. Nelms, and second from Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero. All right, which brings us to other new business. 06, 12, 21. Request to set a public hearing for consideration of assigned variance at 1811, 29th Avenue South, brought to us by Preston Foy of Wallace Burke Fine Jewelry and Wyatt Pugh. We will set that public hearing for our next meeting, December 20, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Next item, 07, 12, 12, 21. Request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with the Assistance League of Birmingham Operation School Bell and pay fiscal year 2122 appropriation, brought to us by Robert Brigette, our Finance Director, and Melody Salter, our City Clerk. So this is an item that's already been budgeted, correct?
Yes, I believe it's five...
And this is just about signing the contract? All right.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Smith and a second from Mr. Harden. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and will be 21-193. All right, next item, 08, 12, 21. Request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of November 23, 2021 through December 6, 2021, brought to us by Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. Dr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I reviewed the vouchers, had several questions that got answered, so I would move for approval of the vouchers.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Jones, a second from Ms. Smith. All, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and will be Resolution 21-194. All right, last item, 09, 12, 21. Request to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the Homewood Chamber of Commerce, brought to us by Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. This was the item that we added, just like the Assistance League, this is one that is already budgeted. So any questions or comments about that? If not, I would entertain...
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and will be 21-195. All right, which brings us to the end of the agenda. Mr. Mayor?
I really don't have anything, other than, everybody get ready for a wonderful night tomorrow night. Christmas parade is back as it should be, with us sitting on the floats and not standing still. So just, just looking forward to that and the lighting of the star on 18th Street, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Before we get to the council and setting agendas, we do, I do need to set a special, specially called meeting. The bids for the 18th Street project portion of, the alley portion of the 18th Street project are due tomorrow, and so I don't want us to sit on that. So what I'd like to do is set it, I've talked with Mr. Smith, and we're going to set it for a, have a specially called meeting next Monday before committees, as long as I can make sure I got six people that can be here, it shouldn't take but 10 minutes. Do we have six people that can be here at 4:50?
I can leave early.
Yeah, three, four, five?
Probably. Okay, all right.
I think we're good.
So that's at least four, five, six, okay, we're good. So anyway, we'll do that, and we can set committees normally after that.
So notice a special call meeting on the 13th?
At 4:50.
For that one item?
For that one item.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Gualtney?
Council Jones, how long do you need for finance?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I would say 30 minutes.
30 minutes, okay. I will set public safety for 5:30, and I don't have any other comments, otherwise, I'm excited about the Christmas parade as well. Are we allowed to throw candy?
I hope so. I've got a bunch of it in my house.
Good, because I'm going to steal all my children's Halloween candy.
How long do you need for your meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, I need 15, 15 minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Geer?
I don't have any comments. Look forward to seeing everybody tomorrow.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Alamon?